To begin with, or actually first, the mayor would like to have the floor for a minute. He'd like to just discuss something with the council. So Judge, you have the floor.
Yes, as you will notice, I revised again the resolution about the meetings and how we're doing it. And I did that because Mr. The President supplied me with some information. And then I got all of the data you asked me to read on this matter, and I read it all last night. And I decided that I had to put more into the resolution. And that also is in keeping with a discussion I have with Mr. Boral yesterday and the mayor, making sure we did suspend all those rules in those other meetings, and it's in a document. And the literature says you can go back and correct things that you didn't do because of the emergency. You can make all the corrections. So that was another thing. Also, you have to give some reason to justify your actions. That was clear in all of the matters. The legal experts have no idea what we're doing and how we're doing it. And as correctly was stated, a lot of things have not been ruled out, and state statutes still exist to some degree. Open meetings law never requires that the public speak at a meeting, but they must be notified of a meeting and be in a way that they can see the meeting or be part of it, but they don't have the right to speak at it. Well, we haven't provided that yet. But we do have the power to follow the executive order, which we're doing. And we are taping everything, which we're doing. We're doing minutes, which we're doing. And the thing I wanted to bring up, if we have pieces of legislation about public hearings scheduled for the next council meeting. Unfortunately, I believe that that resolution to be passed for the public hearing is inadequate. Because you, the one thing that has not been changed at all is that when you have a public hearing, you somehow, even in this situation, have given notice of a public hearing. And people, unlike the meeting, in a public hearing, the public is invited to participate and must be given that opportunity. So we have to write a resolution that when it goes out informs the public that somehow, and that's probably Mr. Galini's forte I've seen so far, how we can inform them that they can participate in the public hearing or what the public hearings are for if we're going to conduct them on the 18th. I think that's the date. And also, whatever that meeting is, I gave the wrong date.
The 15th.
April 15th. Now, so a couple of things you can do. You can, if Mr. Galini thinks that they can call in on the number of participate, and that's part of the notice. And you can also put in the notice that public hearings are being held and what they're being held for. And also that if anyone wishes to participate and can't call in, or we can't do that legally, they should call their councilman, text their councilman, or write to their councilman, or contact each individual councilman that is concerned with the, that is the sponsor of the legislation. That way, the councilman, it's a little easier for people to communicate with one person than a lot of people. The city clerk's not a really good access number because the city clerk isn't always there. And it's easier to call the councilman than it is her and even the deputy. So what I'm saying to you, we've got to work out sometime tonight during this caucus. But before we go and start voting on a public hearing, we have to provide a methodology in the public hearing resolution that how people can participate in this public hearing. Because we're doing non-in-person meetings until further notice. And I have a feeling that's going to go right to at least the first meeting in May and may beyond. Who knows? So, and also they give you guidelines if you want to have an in-person meeting. But those guidelines are, quite frankly, when this, all this information was written was quite a while ago. And things have not improved at all. And I doubt that there's really a justification for doing that because of the danger involved. Because the councilmen, I say, and one thing that you can be sure of, when you're doing something for the Public Health, Safety, and Welfare, you are pretty much on very solid ground. And that's what's in the resolution. I purposely put those words in. Because you have a duty not only to yourselves, but you have a duty to your children, you have a duty to your spouse, you have a duty to your friends. And I'm sure a lot of you are canceling social engagements. And this is no different. The exposure is still the same. The danger is still the same. And for those who, I see one village board said they're going to meet in person. Well, that's fine if they want to do that. But you can't be putting up signs all over this highway saying, "Stay home", and then somehow think it's all right to go to a meeting. It isn't all right to go to a meeting, at least not yet. And I think until they get to zero findings in Anita County, it's just not safe. And then for a period thereafter that there's zero, if that comes. So my point in speaking to you tonight, that we, when we get to the public hearing legislation, we have to devise of what we're going to say in that legislation so the media can report how the public can participate in a public hearing. The other alternative is, they have said if you have, are going to have public hearings that can be put off to a later date because they're not emergencies at all or really not certain they have to be done. So there are some things that have to be done. The public's business about money and equipment and resources and running the city government are things you have to do. Some public hearings on the sale of a piece of property or a lot up in Corn Hill isn't necessarily something you have to really do it at this time. And they say so specifically in the language, that public hearings, you hold them because the public has to be given an opportunity to participate. That's, that's, that's still the law. And, but you don't have to have a public hearing if the thing you're having a public hearing for either has been waived, like the executive, the city of Utica give you a letter of necessity on the local law. If he gives you that, you don't have to have a public hearing, but you have to pass it by two thirty folk, and you can do that. And that's perfectly legal and sits in the statute. So I just wanted the people like Mr. Galini, who set up all this thing, and think of how we could advertise it maybe if we had a public hearing. And also, we have to do the same thing for the meetings. It's not just a public hearing. We have to provide, if we have the technology, the opportunity to give people the method in which they can communicate and listen to a meeting. At a meeting, they're not, they have no right to participate, but they do have a right to hear it.
Judge, I think-
And if we can do it at the time it's happening, fine. If not, then you have to have recordings, which we're going to have, I understand, and you have to have minutes. And then if we can't provide that at some point in the meeting, when you're talking in the meeting itself, you have to say what your future intentions are and what is the ability of your technology at this particular time. You can't provide for people listening to a meeting if there's no technology to do it. If there is technology to do it, then you have to give notice of that. That's how you do it. So that's, and of course, all of this is legitimate. Before you do anything, consult your attorney. Now, I took that very seriously. I've been reading this stuff. I was up very late last night, and I read, I read everything. And I'm trying to give you the best legal advice that I can within my personal knowledge. And when it comes to the technical part, I really don't have that much personal knowledge. Thank God, Mr. Galini has set up this method that we're doing now, which is perfectly legal. Perfectly legal. That's option three in the executive order. And we will do it to the best of our ability. And we're going to say so on the record too. They're going to read it in the record and they're going to hear it in the record in a minute. And that's best we can do. Okay? And that's all I have to say on both of those subjects. Continue your meeting, Ms. Majority Leader.
Council President Galini, he had, he may have something to add to this that will speak to what you're talking about right there.
Yeah, so just in a nutshell, first, Judge, thank you very much for your attention on this because it's appreciated.
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes. Thank you very much for your attention on this. Maria, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can't hear you hardly at all.
He's got a volume on his computer. If he turns it up, it might help him.
Yes, Judge, you may have to increase your volume on your end if everyone else can hear me okay.
Fine.
Okay. All right. So just in a nutshell, I was going to do a quick announcement on this at the beginning of seven o'clock meeting. That was a perfect time. The IT department is currently working with Corporation Council to just clarify the legal ramifications of a live stream, which we will be capable of doing and we expect to do for the next meeting. That will allow the public to watch the meetings. For public hearings and potentially the public comments, we also are working on that as well, Judge. And the public will be able to be notified in our public notices to email clerk@cityofutica.com to arrange how they will dial in or be called into the meetings. And they in fact will be able to participate live as they would have been previously in person. So we do have the ability to do that, and it will be up and running by the next meeting. If you would like to have us amend that public hearing resolution. If you feel it doesn't need to be amended, because we could put the information about how that will be arranged, then that will be okay.
I, I, I wanted to amend it, Michael. I'd like you to do it. You put in there what you said. As long as the resolution has the information in there, and we have the media here, they're going to publish it. And thank God they're here. And so we will have done everything we can do to have public participation and notice. That's all we're obligated to do under the law.
This is Charlie Brown, if I can make a suggestion.
Maria is the chair. Maria, decide who has the floor.
Maria, this is Celeste. Can I have the floor for a moment? Amendment, Judge has written, I'm looking five lines up from the bottom in the very last paragraph where it says, for the participation by-
We're not on-
Breaking up.
We're actually not on that legislation yet.
Yeah, we're just talking about the call for the public hearing for the Whitesboro Street property.
Charlie Brown?
Charles Brown there.
Okay.
Charles Brown there.
Yes, I am. I have a suggestion.
Okay.
I recognized. Okay, thank you. What we suggest, that your typical calling for public hearing legislation simply directs the city clerk to publish a notice of the public hearing. And because the technology is changing so quickly that the city clerk can craft that notice to reflect whatever technology is available at the time that the notice is going out. For example, we just, we're publishing the notice of public hearing for the local law you adopted on the 20th. And it simply says that people can participate by sending an email to the city clerk's office or by letter. That was the best we could do at the time. If when you're publishing public notices for other things, you got better technology, you can put that in the, the notice.
So if I understand you correctly, we do not have to amend the pieces of legislation to reflect that. Just in our notice, we reflect it.
Yeah, I think you could leave it to the city clerk to craft the notice, to meet whatever is available at the time she does the notice, which may be very different than what's available right now. I think if you try to fix it now, then you're going to lock it into something that you could do better.
And I just reread, just for everyone's sanity, I reread the notice, and it is general enough where what Charlie, Charlie Brown is saying, it's definitely general enough, Judge, where that can happen. It's on the screen as well.
And we'll be happy to share.
I have no objection. If the, if this Corporation Council is comfortable with our notice, I'm comfortable with it too. I just, I just thought that at least in our, in our legislative history, we would be saying something in that notice that indicated that we were, we were doing something that to the city clerk, it was a little bit different to make sure that people- In other words, what I'm trying to do, and was different, and I'm not contesting what Charlie said, is I want my, our paper trail to be clear that we did take notice of everything when we acted on those particular occasions. Because when somebody criticizes, criticizes us seven months later, why didn't we do this when we did that? I'm, I'm trying to be as verbose as all that legal scholar stuff I read about all these different theories they have. But I'm just trying to say that we will have a paper trail that we later we can refer back to. Yes, we thought of that. This is what we did. And just say something in the notice that says that we will provide the, you know, participation to the best of the technologies available at the time to a notice we give to the city clerk. I would like to actually say that because somebody might say, "Well, why didn't you do something else?" So we did it. Well, we're, well, I'm one of these persons that says, "I'd like to have a paper trail." And that's, I know what's not necessary, necessary, but that's what I'm only looking for. And I told that to Charlie and the mayor and Mr. Boral the other day, that all I, even with the resolution, I was being verbose, but I want to be verbose. I want to try to stick everything I can in there. Because somewhere along the way, somebody will, might make some challenge or something that you didn't do anything. Well, I want a paper trail.
Thank you, Judge.
So we brought it up. It'll be in the re, is this being recorded, by the way, Mr. Galini?
Yes, absolutely. This will be part of the transcripts of the meeting.
It'll be in this recording, so that would satisfy me too. That will clearly say that when we discuss this, we were aware of the situation and we, we know what the solution is and how we're going to handle it. That, that's good enough for me. And if that's, that's the Corporation Council, the person, Mr. Brown, that's a good enough for me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Maria, I've got a shirt on the screen or agenda for the screening.
I'm glad that this is being transcribed, and it'll show that we did recognize the problem and we know what we're doing with it. Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Now, we're going to go on with ordinance number one. This is for council member Beatrice. It is to erect an eight-foot fence. Are you okay with this piece of legislation?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. I'm clear.
Yes, I'm fine. I did all the research on this, and it's good to go.
The next is to call for a public hearing on 1-8.8-1-526 Whitesboro Street. This is for the, well, I'm not seeing it right now. But this is, the company's going to purchase this property for $180,000 to build a distillery. This is in my district, and I am good with this one. This is for 928 Lansing Street, purchasing the property for $7,000. This is in my district, and I'm good with this. Next one is for in ordinance establishing fees for the use of the sale Longo field. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this one? Okay.
Madam Majority Leader, I do have a question about the Longo fees one.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I do see it. Okay, I have it. I answered my own question.
All that noise?
Frankie moving his papers.
The next one is a piece of legislation that we were talking about. And I believe Celeste, Councilwoman, friend, you have an amendment or something you'd like to change on this that you wanted to talk about?
Lines up, one, two, three, four, five. In the fifth line up from the very bottom, I would just like to ins-
You're breaking-
End. Okay.
Well, there's, you could, you could dial in by phone. Or why don't you try just turning off your video momentarily? Because that's going to reduce the amount of bandwidth you're using.
Okay, sorry. I did that. Okay, so I'm going to- And I want to insert the phrase, "including public comment" after participation by- "to attempt to develop the means to provide for the participation by the public, including public comment," without the- Did that make a difference in terms of me, my audio breaking up?
Yes.
Include public comment, and what was the rest of it?
Everything else stays exactly the same. All I'm doing is inserting a phrase. I was just reading from the legislation around it. So the only thing you're adding is-
Okay.
And where would that be?
Right after.
"Including public comment, participation by the public, comma, including public, comma." Back to with the, so I'm adding three words.
Including public comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Are people good with that? Everyone good with that?
Yep.
I don't know. You suspended all the rules, and what are you doing? You, you putting a rule back in? I, I don't get it.
I would hold off on the amendment to, right? That's the public hearing part of our new process that Michael's going with. So why don't we hold off on this amendment for now?
Cur. I concur.
Didn't commit us to it. The entire sentence says, "We'll continue to attempt to develop" participation by the public. So it's still just an attempt. It doesn't commit us to it. But it makes a-
Celeste, there will be, there will be a whole different, there will be a whole different resolution for our public- There would be a whole different public-
That was a public hearings. That was for public hearings that we can tell them to. I wasn't talking about anything about public comment. Public comment during a meeting isn't required by the open meetings law, number one. And we've suspended all our rules as, at everything except the way we're doing it now, which is a different section. We're doing it under the executive order of the governor. And public comment could be a very cumbersome thing for all of us. And that isn't provided in what we did. Just a few paragraphs before that, we suspended all of our rules for all the meetings. And getting into public comment is really stretching everything. And there's no provision for public comment at present time. So I, that's the only objection I have. I, I, I don't have any objection to public comment. I just think that at present time, I don't-
I thought we're supposed to contact the, contact us if they had a problem, and then we can annotate it and share it.
So I think the same-
I agree, Mark.
The same way they communicate with you for public hearings, they can communicate with you about meetings. They should do the same thing, do it in the same manner. Email, calling you, texting you, making comments. But it's, it's tough enough to get through these matters properly and have a good complete record and without muddying the waters a little bit.
So what I mean-
Just being a little technical here, but I, I, I don't like to be too broad to about something we can't really do and shouldn't do.
So just really quick, I want to throw something out there. There's been multiple people, council people, other than you, Celeste, who've also reached out and said, "How can we do public comment?" I think we will be able to do it. And I think that there is a want of the council to do something like public comment. But at the same time, what the judge is saying is referencing it as functioning public comment like it was prior would make things difficult. Because if we do introduce public comment, even for our next meeting, we're going to have to do it very similar to how I explained we would be accomplishing a public hearing where someone would have to email clerk@cityofutica.com. So we have to really establish that. And I think, you know, the overall want is that the public will still be able to participate. And I don't think passing this resolution as is is going to preclude us from doing that, even at the next meeting. I think this is just covering us-
It won't preclude it. All that my amendment really does is to spell out what we need by- Listening in and being able to even watch a live stream, I think most people would not, in any common sense, consider that participation. Friend, if we're going to say pretend, let's see what we mean by it.
Maria, you have the, this is your, yeah.
I can see where you're coming from, but I also don't know if there's support for that amendment. So if you want us to, you know, see if there's support for it so we can keep talking about it, we can do that. If, we can do it on the floor. Which would you prefer?
This is my recommendation. I got a recommendation.
I agree with, I agree with Mr. Galini. If you're going to do public comment, you have to do it in a manner which you, is in our rules. And, and I have no objection to you doing that if you want to do it. I'm just saying that you have to be clear that you didn't suspend all your rules. Because the participation that is mandatory, that what we have, that I have addressed, is public hearings, they have to participate. I mean, that's, we have to do that. We have to find that. And we're doing that. How broad we can be to go back and try to do a public comment period in the way our rules say it and the way it was conducted by the president, now, it might be quite, I don't know if it's possible. If you can do it, do it. And if you want to do it, I have no objection to it.
Maria, can I have the floor?
You're reading your rules.
At this point, I suggest we move as the judge wrote. The legislation and the public comments will follow.
Yes. I, can I have the floor, Maria?
Yes, one, yes.
This is Marky Mark. I, I would pose what the judge is talking about. I think President Galini probably got this thing pretty under control right now. I think, I know he's working on future things. Let it stand as it is and use the KISS method. Keep it simple, stupid, until further notice. All right, Michael, it's on you.
Discussion. Can we move forward?
Good.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions regarding this or want to discuss this further?
Let's move.
Just a reminder, we do have to waive the Thursday rule before we vote on this one. The next one is a local law suspending the provisions of the Utica City Charter, Section 7.003 Sub A, by reducing the amount of required budgetary appropriation for the construction, et cetera, of streets. This is introductory to Local Law Number Two of 2020. It is reducing the amount of paving that we would be doing from $5 million to $3 million. And any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I have, I have a comment, Councilman DeBrengo here. I understand the need for reducing $2 million, borrowing $2 million, 2.5 million, but we're going to reduce it to 500,000. I understand the need because of obviously what's going on in the world today. There are some concerns I have. Obviously, the public did vote on this. And I would, really would like to hear from the public on this matter before we actually vote. And I would really would like to hear from the public on this matter before we actually vote on it. But I understand there are some time constraints. You know, you have to get bidders out there and you have to act on it, you know, soon so you can get the company, whoever gets awarded could do the job. But also, I have a concern is, I know the governor put a law in that, that no one can do any construction unless it's.
Essential.
Essential, essential. And I don't know if this considered essential, non-essential. So we might not even be able to even do the streets for maybe two, three, four months down the road. We don't know that, so.
That's a good question.
Concern is if, if we do decide to reduce it to three, you know, and everything is okay, and maybe we, maybe we could, we could actually pave the streets. Maybe we could look into it and, and add the 2 million somewhere down the road, maybe within the next 30 days, 60 days. And it may give us that, you know, bring us back to 5, 5 million. If I, if I get a lot of calls from my constituents and saying, listen, what'd you do this for? We need our streets fixed. We need this, we need that, whatever, then, you know, I'm going to raise that concern and maybe we could look into it later on. If we can't do it at all for the whole year because of obviously what's going on, and then we're going to maybe have to tack it on next year's budget. It's all, thank you.
Counsel, this is Catherine Hartnett. May I, may I just comment on what Councilman DeBrengo just said as far as whether the road construction is essential?
Yes.
The Empire State Development is handling basically some interpretation and guidance as far as what are essential services. Essential construction includes roads, bridges, transit facilities, utilities, hospitals, et cetera. So road construction is considered essential, so that shouldn't be a concern.
All right, thank you.
Question on this one?
Yeah, can, can I have the floor? I do have, is the Budget Director on?
Yes, I am.
I have a few questions in terms of this. And if we're reducing the paving by $2 million, from my understanding, we're not really paying for that in this budget year, right? And so we're banding for it in the first year, right?
We, we will be banning, yes, we would be banning for 500,000.
So how much?
Normally, we, normally we ban for two and a half million. The other two and a half million comes from about a, a million seven through the CHIPS program, which comes from New York State. It's a consolidated highway improvement program. And then the balance, 800,000, comes from CDBG, in which we do roads located in the CDBG target area. So, go ahead.
We have an additional 1.5 coming in from the stimulus in terms of, in terms of going to the CDBG, at least that's how I understood.
Yes.
The act to be seen. So we have additional 1.5 million. And if we're banding for it this year, we're only saving, right, what, 60,000?
60,000.
In this, in this particular budget year?
Hmm, are you talking about like interest or something, or I, I don't know?
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, if this is a, if this is a banned as opposed to a bond, we're only paying the interest payment on the loan, right?
That's correct, yes.
So if we're not going, and I guess my other question is, if, if the, if the rates are low now, why would we not just keep the paving the way that it is? Take out the finances that we need to take while the interest is, is low? And, and because it, this is a band, it's not a bond, and we're only paying the 60, we're only paying whatever the, the interest payment is.
I think it, it, I think it kind of refers back to a bigger discussion. The mayor has, has requested that I begin to prepare for him, for his review, kind of monitoring where we are, where we expect to be from, you know, everything from the federal to the state to the county government, because they all impact us in a, in a variety of ways. And I think part of the concern is that in, in two or three months, if, 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 if we aren't able for some reason to pay our bills, that we would have to go out and do a short-term borrowing. At this point, we don't know that we would have to do that. But in the, up until about three years ago, when the controller's on the phone, he'd be better to address this. Up till three years ago, we had to do short-term borrowings every year just to pay our bills because of cash flow. So at any point in time, state aid has slowed down, if property taxes, if people are struggling with paying their property taxes timely, you know, we'd all expect sales tax to have some kind of reduction. We don't know what that might be. We just need to make sure that we have enough cash flow to make the payments that we're required to make. And so I think part of the thought process is, is, you know, to try to reduce our borrowing at this point because the, 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 the smaller amount of borrowing that we have, the better, the better credit rating we have and the lower interest that we pay. And Controller, are you on the phone? Would you like to mention, talk about this?
Yeah, I am here. I mean, you're right that it's a small amount on the first year of the ban, but this does stress the debt down the road. You still have to pay that 2 million back. And, and right now where we are with the debt structure, we have to be very careful because we, we are just at the beginning of this virus and we have no idea where this is going or how this is going to affect our bottom line. And fiscally, this is a very smart move to reduce this, to keep our borrowing low at this point. So we do free up some debt for who knows what's going to happen.
But I, but we're borrowing 700 and some thousand from, for the capital plan too though, right?
Yes, yes, yep. And that's because we, we had a, one of them is, is simply a snowplow and salter. We had one that actually caught on fire this year, so we're actually down a, a snowplow and a salter. So we have an ambulance reach chassis that if, if we don't get it, if we don't get it improved and updated, it would have to go out of service. So some of these things are, are requirements and that's why when the mayor sent down his revised request, he really got, he got rid of all those things that, you know, were essential two months ago. And today, looking at where we are as it relates to the general fund and where we might be in six to eight months, may not be as essential.
I'm, I'm trying to chew all of this and, and look at the finances. Okay, I guess I'm done with my questions from.
I, just one thing, I, I want to say to Brango, we did cut 2 million from the capital plan and we also cut 2 million on the paving plan. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
And this paving plan is just for this season only, this summer only. And then we will pick it up, back up, you know, next year, next fiscal year.
Yes.
But to me, but to me, now, now, Councilman DeBrengo, I, I get that, but to me, I'm just having a logical problem because.
So am I, so am I.
Because, because I'm saying if we're going to cut the 2 million when the interest is low, right? And we're, we're concerned about, we're concerned about the impacts of the virus, right, with sales revenue. Let, let, let's, let's run this model out and say we get $0 in sales revenue for the next two months, right? That's only what, a, a little over 2, 2 million? If, if you look at, we get about 14 million in sales revenue for the year. You divide that up, that's a little over 2 million dollars. Now, we put over 250,000 in the budget for a contingency.
I think it's 150, but.
So that, and then the stimulus package said 1.5. I, I think the, the way that goes is to CDBG, which may impact, which, which I guess we can use CDBG funding, given our current formula for, for roads and streets. So I guess, and, and I do get both.
But I think, but remember, part, that, that stimulus money, part of what that goal of that stimulus money was, was to stimulate our local economy. And so the mayor has tasked the UED staff with beginning to come up with a plan as to how to re-stimulate our local economy. And that, and that, the goal was to utilize dollars from that 1.5 million to do that. And I, you know, I can't speak on his behalf, the mayor's behalf at the moment, because I, I don't think he's come up with it. He, he hasn't formulated a plan. He's, he's looking for input. But it wasn't just to take the 1.5 stimulus, federal stimulus dollars and sink it into our infrastructure.
So, so I guess where I'm at is if we say we're not going to, that we're going to decrease the, the, the paving by 2 million this year and we're going to pick it up, I guess we can't say both, I, I don't think we can say both of those in the same sentence. We can't say we're going to reduce the 2 point million because we need to be thinking about how this is going to impact, what it's going to impact, and that we're going to pick that up later and because we don't know where we're going to be. I think we can't say that, that we're going to decrease it and then look to increase the 2, in, 2 million in the future. I think really what we're arguing is, which goes back to the bigger argument, which is things that, you know, we've all talked about, is, is this paving plan really going to put us in debt down the road? And I think really now what we're litigating is what's going to be the impact? Because I, I don't see us cutting 2 million now to say we're going to pick that up next year.
Well, you got to remember, Councilman, you know, this is a ban by an anticipation note, and at some point you have to put it into long-term debt. And this is really just taking some of the stress off of our long-term debt. So we're in a more fiscally responsible place. And you may be right, Councilman, these are discussions the council needs to have over the next year on, on, you know, going back to the 5 million paving and really looking at how much this is going to stress our debt with this city and, and how we come out of this whole, this whole situation with the coronavirus. But we have no idea how we're going to come out of this thing.
We were, we were told a long time ago, when this first kicked off, that after about five years of this paving plan, it was going to cause a major problem on our, on our debt. Now it's coming, it's coming to that point. So, yes, we need to talk about it and, you know, I didn't vote for it because I knew this was going to happen. It was one of the things. And there you go.
How, how, how does the, um, does the bond scheduling work with this? I mean, are there things that are coming off that, that are helping this situation? Or, or is the thought that there will always be things coming off in the next, in the next, I guess, two years when this, when this changes from a ban to a bond?
So right now, it's, it's anticipated that for 2021, you have to remember, we, we also borrowed back in January 4 million for parking garages that were in disrepair and about 415,000 for some trucks and our street lighting, for our new street lighting districts. You combine this with what, what you all are considering approving tonight, basically gets us what's very close to the number that's coming off the principal of our debt schedule. So the, the really, I consider it good news, is, is that what we're sitting on debt, other than the street lighting, which is going to be paid for through the street lighting savings, that, other than that, the debt that we're, we're, we're sitting on today will be the same debt, very close to the same debt we're sitting on this time next year. And, and, and with the additional, if we, if we were to bring it back from 500,000 to 2.5 million borrowing, it's just another 2 million dollars that we owe. And I attached to my memo, there was another attachment, the general fund outstanding debt. So you could kind of see, you know, we have been making some improvements on, on our debt, but it's going to, you know, continue to increase at 2 and a half million a year. Right now, we owe 7 and a half million dollars for paving, and that's 2 and a half million times the past three years. So if we were to borrow the 2 and a half million this year, it would be 10 million dollars that we owe on paving. And with the, the way that the climate's been freezing and warming up, that's when our, our ground contracts and expands and, and that's when we see a lot of the problems in our pavement. We expected this, the pavement has a useful life of 15 years and we're simply not getting 15 years out of our paving. And, and we've taken a look at, you know, is there something wrong with the mix? Is there something wrong with the contractor? And, and we haven't been able to find that. It's just simply that with the weather patterns changing, the contraction and the expansion, we're not getting 15 years. So the road that we're paving today, most likely will be revisiting in our seven or eight years. And, and we can't keep up with that kind of cycle. We just fiscally can't keep up with it.
And make, and make no mistake, Councilman, 3 million in paving is not no paving. That's a substantial amount. Mr. Meola's original referendum in front of the people was for 2 million a year, and, and you're still be 50% above that. So it's not like we're not paving. That's, Mr. Mahoney can maybe chime in, but it's a substantial amount of paving.
Frank, Frank put up a referendum that I think was what, 2.5?
I was made me.
Back in 2006.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It was 2 million, wasn't it, Frank?
Is Mike Mahoney?
Say what?
So, is Mike Mahoney here?
It doesn't seem so.
Okay.
Did you have a question, councilperson, that we can help you with?
I do. So maybe you can, it has to do with what you just were pointing towards. Can you give us a, this adds up to? That's what I would have asked Mr. Mahoney.
Um, let me take a look real quick here at my desk, because I have all the streams that were, go ahead.
Mike's going to have, Mike have some problems with some mill and fill and some complete reconstruction. So we're going to be lucky because, we're going to be lucky because of what's going on construction and everybody else who's working there. There's a lot of construction equipment that's down, that they're not being repaired. So we're going to be up to dire straits to at least get $2 spent on our roads this year. So why take a loan off for 5 million if we're lucky, we're going to be able to spend 3 million? Thank you.
Heather said that the last time we met. She made a similar kind of argument that, yeah. I can see the logic. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
I just think it's the right thing to do and, and at this time, this is a Councilman LaMeco. We, we don't know what our sales tax is going to be. We don't know what any type of revenue. The governor, when he is speaking, is saying that as the money comes in, that's when he's going to start doling out to the, to the local governments. So that being said, we don't know how much the, you know, he's already saying that he's what, 6 billion or 16 billion dollars in the hole already? So we don't know how much we're going to get from the state. He could be telling he's going to give us some, but he pretty much made it pretty clear on, on his daily brief that he's not giving any money out until the money comes in. And then he's going to dole it out a little at a time as he has it. So we're going into this year right now, not knowing exactly what we're going to be getting from the state. And I, I expect pretty much the same from the federal government as well, because of what's going on and the billions and billions and trillions of dollars they're spending on this, on this virus at this time now. So I don't think, I think this is the time you, you button the hatches, you try to cut where you can. And, you know, next year we'll take another look at it and hopefully our, our financial situation, you know, federally, state and local is going to be better and we could resume and, you know, standard operating procedures move on like, like we normally do. Thank you.
Anything else? At this time, I'd like to ask the council members, Judge Guaramone, Charlie Brown, and Catherine Hartnett to enter into the other WebEx, the email that was sent to you. Everyone else, please stay on the line. We will.
Motion to go into executive session? Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
I, I, I'm not sure I know what the other WebEx is.
I will call you, Judge, and make sure you have the information. Is there a motion to go into executive session and please state the reason?
I'll motion that.
I'm making a motion to go into executive session for the reason that we would like to talk with our, our attorneys regarding an ongoing litigation that they'd like to discuss with us.
Okay, I'll second it.
Anybody object?
Let's go.
Okay. Okay, it is April 1st, 2020, 7:51 PM. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for the City of Utica Common Council being called to order. I am going to call the roll for the clerk so that the clerk and deputy may take the mitts. Who is in attendance? McNeil? McNeil?
Here. I think, I, I think the judge.
Hold on. Okay, okay. Couldn't or could?
He's not getting on right now.
Okay, let's.
The access code. It was. The access code. It was the original one that you used.
Yes.
Here, but I will help judge.
Okay, we will. We will continue. Birmaster?
Friend?
Miola?
Present.
Moody?
Here.
Beatrice?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
LaMedico?
Present.
Brango?
Present.
All right, I'm Michael Galimi. There are 10 present. The order of business this evening is to deal with all legislation that was discussed in the pre-meeting conference as well as the Committee of Hall. The meeting has been called to order. So soon as we have Judge Garamone on, we will begin with ordinance number one fence for 209 Stevens Street.
He currently needs you. He's tried it five times.
All right. Well, let's do this then. All right.
Give him a couple minutes.
All right. Whoever that is, that's hilarious. All right.
Whose ringtone is that?
Mine.
During the meeting?
We are resuming the meeting. Sorry about that. All right. So the first piece of legislation on the agenda coming out of meeting conference is ordinance number one fence for 209 Stevens Street, sponsored by Councilmember Beatrice.
I should be in now.
Yes, Judge, thank you.
Okay. I mean, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Am I supposed to read this, Mike? Or is the clerk going to read it?
If you if you would like to read that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I can't. Okay, hang on one second here. I gotta get my glass. Okay. Okay, be it ordinance, be it ordinance that the common council from the City of Utica does hereby grant Michelle Ryan of 209 Stevens Street, the City of Utica, permission to erect an eight-foot fence along the rear fence line at the above location.
All right.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a second. Any opposed to introducing this so we can bring it to a vote? No one's opposed to bringing that to a vote. I'm going to issue a poll so that everyone can vote at this time. You'll see it pop up. Obviously, if you're not a council member, you do not have to participate in the poll. Where? Okay, I'm also just acknowledge that you voted. McNeil?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see no poll.
Why can't we just go around and say yay or nay?
This this so hold on, hold on, hold on a second. This is something that myself and Councilman McNeil did want to try for this meeting. If everyone can see it, that's fine. We can vote just like we were before by roll calls. Does anyone have an issue with roll call this evening?
No.
Okay, perfect. McNeil?
Yes.
All right. Clerk and Deputy Clerk, you were taking minutes and taking these votes down, correct?
Yeah, we are.
Thank you very much. Birmaster? Birmaster is muted. That's why it's so quiet on the call. Birmaster?
Did you hear me? Did you hear me?
Not.
Uh, yes.
We can't know. Okay.
Yeah.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yep.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
LaMedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
98 adopted. Thank you very much. Next piece of legislation, resolution. I will read the resolution. It is a call for a public hearing. Utica Urban Renewal Agency is the owner of 318 dot eight dash one dash five two dot six Whitesboro Street. This is a call for a public hearing on the sale of the property of 318 dot eight dash one dash five two dot six Whitesboro Street to Anthony Hines and a signee entity to be formed for a sum of $180,000. Your votes on this public hearing, the public hearing is to be called Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the regularly scheduled common council meeting.
Great.
Thank you, Birmaster?
Wait, hey, this is the deputy clerk. Do I need a second in order to get this on the floor?
Or? Yes, actually, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yeah, you you moved it. So who's? All right, thank you. Any opposed to moving this legislation? All right, thank you. I was falling back into the old ways of being just on the agenda. Thank you. We have two votes so far. Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
All right, this has been introduced and passed. Just for point of reference, I'm not sure it was on the recording. Birmaster, what was your vote on that again?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next piece of legislation is the paired ordinance to sell the property at 318 dot eight dash one dash five two dot six Whitesboro Street to Hines and a signee for the sum of $180,000 by the Urban Renewal Agency. Is there a motion to place this in committee?
I make a motion.
All right. Before we do that, I'm sorry, we need a motion to introduce this. It's McNeil introducing this. Do we have a second?
Nice.
All right, thank you. Any opposed? Okay.
Was that to Brango?
Williamson.
Was it Councilman DeBrango?
It was Williamson. Williamson with the second.
Yeah, I got a deeper voice than DeBrango.
All right, all right. Okay, we're good. We're good. Yeah, do we have a McNeil made a motion to places in committee? Do we have a second?
I'll place a second on it.
Okay, that was LaMedico with the second. Any opposed to placing this in committee? Okay, committee, very much. The next resolution is a call for a public hearing, 19, the sale of property by the URA to Eden Dragovich for $7,000. It's 928 Lansing Street. Do we have a motion to introduce by McNeil?
Yes. McNeil?
Second?
Brango.
I think it was a second on that. Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, this has been introduced. May I have your votes by roll call on announcing this public hearing for April 15th, 2020, 7:00 PM? McNeil?
Yes.
Birmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Hey.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. 98 adopted. We have a motion to introduce the ordinance to sell 928 Lansing Street.
McNeil?
All right, we have a second?
Birmaster?
Thank you. Any opposed? Piece has been introduced. Ordinance number five is the sale of 928 Lansing Street by the URA to Eden Dragovich with a sum of $7,000. Do we have a motion to places in committee?
McNeil?
We have a second?
There you go. DeBrango.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Next piece of legislation, which needs to be introduced. This was this came from law departments. It has been introduced by McNeil and Williamson. Can we just audibly acknowledge that? McNeil, do you have a, would you like to introduce this?
Um.
Ordinance establishing fees for the use of sale on a field.
Would you like to read that into the record, at least the fees?
I would. Would we like to introduce this piece of legislation?
You were reading the other ones. I thought you were reading this one as well. This is an.
No, I'll read it. I'll read it.
I'll introduce it.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to introduce from DeBrango. Is there is?
LaMedico's second it.
LaMedico, any opposed to introducing the ordinance establishing fees for use of sale on a field? Okay, it's been introduced. The piece reads ordained, the code of ordinances in the City of Utica is hereby amended by attending by adding thereto a new section to be known as two dash 18 dash 16. The read is follows, section two dash 18 dash 63, fees for use of sale on a field. Fees for use of sale on a field shall be as follows, sale on a field fees, resident youth sports organization, no charge, non-resident youth sports organization, $100 per game, resident adult not-for-profit sports organization, $75 per game, commercial private clubs or for-profit, $400 per game. Sale on a field tournament, day rates equals 10 hours, resident youth, no charge, non-resident youth, $500, resident adult, $500, non-resident adult, $500. Lighting, lighting for all events, $25 per hour. Request requested add-ons scoreboard operator, $25 per hour, sound system operator, $25 per hour, bathroom access, Buckley Bath House, $140 per day. There are two stars on the resident youth sports organization at the top. It is resident youth organization needs to prove that 75% of the youth playing are city residents. Introduced, may we have the votes on proposed ordinance number six? McNeil?
Yes.
Birmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes, as long as I'm the scoreboard operator.
Brango?
25 hours an hour. That's pretty good.
All right, this piece has been passed. Moving on to the next piece. The next piece is a resolution, which there is no name, so I will summarize the resolution before it's introduced. Whereas the recent virus situation in the United States of America, State of New York, County of Oneida, and the City of Utica has resulted in a number of steps taken by the state and federal governments is authorized.
President, Mr. President, we need to waive the Thursday rule on this piece of legislation first, please, sir.
Um, all right, I will, we we can do that. Let me finish summarizing it because that could be the first motion I've summarized. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Those citizens to conduct the business that they have been sworn to perform in a manner that accomplishes those goals. Whereas the mayor of the City of Utica did close the city hall to all persons except essential limited personnel, and this occurred at a time the City of Utica's common council was required by various statutes to conduct city business and adopt an annual estimate no later than March 20th, 2020. And whereas it was determined COVID-19 virus spreading in the city and the state that the common council should be meet by utilizing a WebEx terminal connection. This is on the screen. I will summarize and read the be it further resolved and follow up with the rest of this after it's introduced. Be it further reason all the common councils utilizing whatever means, technology that it possesses to conduct the business of the City of Utica regarding significant legislation that affects the citizens of the city and attempting and will continue to attempt, et cetera. The common council has and will continue to record its meetings, prepare minutes of said meetings, and explore every means to comply with the spirit of the law as it existed prior to devastating effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. We need to waive the Thursday rules or motion, Miola?
Yes, Mr. President.
We have a second, a second from LaMedico. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule so that this may be introduced? Okay, that has been waived. Councilwoman McNeil, would you like to introduce this, please?
I move to adopt.
Can we? Let's just move to introduce, actually.
Introduce it? Sorry.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Okay, that was Beatrice for the clerks. Any opposed to introducing this piece of legislation? Okay, I'm going to read the rest of it. I did read the first three, whereas I'm going to start at the resolve that in accordance, Governor Cuomo's executive order number 202 dot one of March 13th, 2020, the common council for the City of Utica has and will adopt the feature outlined in set order for conducting the business of the City of Utica and its meetings. In said order entitled a summary of meeting options during COVID-19 pandemic, there are three options to consider. Be it further resolved that the common council of the City of Utica will adopt option three as set forth in order number 202 dot one of March 13th, 2020, which provides that members of the public body may meet via conference call or video conference with no in-person location. The public must be allowed to listen to or view such meetings, and the public body must record and later transcribe such meetings. Be it further resolved in the interest of the public safety and welfare of the citizens of the City of Utica and the members of government in said city that the common council did suspend its rules of order regarding the conducting the meetings of the common council for the meetings of March 20, 2020, the causes held on March 31st, 2020, and for the meeting of April 1st, 2020, together with all future meetings and conduct conducted the meetings on March 20th, 2020, March 31st, 2020, and April 1st, 2020, in accordance with the guidelines set forth in executive order number one of the best of its ability by employing terminal connections to all parties that were involved in said meetings. Previously read, final section, your votes. McNeil?
Yes.
You you had to read the last one. You didn't read the last piece.
Judge, I will read. I will read the last one for the judge once again. Be it further resolved that the common council is utilizing whatever means, the technology that it possesses to conduct the business of the City of Utica regarding significant legislation that affects the citizens of the city and attempting and will continue to attempt to develop the means to provide for the participation by the public without the requirement of in-person contact to ensure the welfare and safety of all concerned. The common council will continue to explore technology that can be employed when there is a requirement of a public hearing. Common council has and will continue to record its meetings, prepare minutes of said meetings, and explore every means to comply with the spirit of the law as it existed prior to devastating effects of COVID-19 pandemic. Your votes. McNeil?
Yes.
Birmaster?
Yes.
Yes, and I would like the chance to qualify.
Okay, okay, at the end. Thank you. Thank you for doing it at the end. Miola?
See that? Thumbs up, yes.
All right, Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
LaMedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you, and you may qualify.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll I'll keep this very brief. Just want to say that important to me. It's very important to the to the voters of the city. And at the earliest possible convenience, we ought to build back in technological means, but we can invite the public back in to actually participate. I made a suggestion for an amendment, the pre-conference. I did not get enough support for it. I decided not to bring it forward. But I do want to say that we ought to be creating a public comment back into these rules, and that as soon as we revert to our normal, our prior to normal public comment policy. Thank you very much.
Can I say something? This is Councilman LaMedico.
Let me just make sure, Councilperson Friend, you are all set?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, LaMedico, you have the floor.
Just the reason that we didn't pass this and Councilwoman Friend. Just, uh, the, the reason that we didn't pass this and, uh, and Councilman and Friend, uh,
referring to the amendment, correct? The amendment?
I, I wish she had mentioned that, that we tell her we did, we, we were going to look at it in the future, but at this particular time, we just didn't feel, as well as, as our council didn't feel that, uh, it was right to put it in now. This is something further down the road that we will work with. This is not something that the council was against. It's just something that we have to work with. So I just want to make sure that, uh, the, the way it was originally stated by Councilman Friend, like we didn't really want it, and that's not the case. So we, I would like her maybe to, to change the way she had said it. I will give her the opportunity to, to give that.
Uh, councilperson friend, would you like to reaffirm, uh, your comments regarding, uh, the pre-meeting conference? Or let things lie?
Uh, no. A bit more detail. All I was asking in that amendment was to add three-word phrase that it would have said. That's all I wanted. Um, given how the entire sentence is written, um, there was, there's nothing, um, as that we will attempt, uh, to, you know, to, um, uh, we will continue to attempt by the public, and wanted to say including public comment. I don't think that that, I did not mean to imply it. Certainly, I didn't imply, I'm sorry. Other people were public comment. I don't know whether they are or not, but they did not want to add that three-word phrase into the legislation.
Well, thank you for your apology.
All right, thank you. Uh, was that?
President.
Geronimo, yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to say that, uh, I, uh, I thought about the, with just what the council and friend were saying. Uh, but you know, the state suspended, uh, the, uh, uh, of a meetings law, and, uh, they didn't suspend, uh, the public hearing part of it and some other things, but they, we, there's nothing about public participation in that at all. And also, uh, the reason I, uh, didn't want to do anything differently is because we are following an executive order of the governor and a specific order. And the, I agreed with the president that if we, we'd have to do another special resolution and pre-abending our orders, and we already said we suspended them. And I think it becomes cumbersome and honest also to him, because suppose a lot of people did respond, and then how does the president run it in the way we used to run it? And suppose a lot of people did reply and wonder why they weren't called, that they couldn't get in, or they couldn't get their numbers. It took me almost twenty minutes to get back to the regular meeting. And so I say that, uh, that these, the public comment will be back whenever we're back. Uh, everything's going to go back to normal, but I want us to act consistent to the resolution because it's that resolution that we're going to have to, may have to defend in the future, and I think it's a good resolution, uh, that protects all of us as to our legal obligation. And so I want Councilman Friend to know that we're going to go back to business as you to, as usual, when we all go back to business as usual. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so this has been passed. Uh, we have all the votes, um, and, uh, just reaffirming what was also on the record in caucus. If we can do it, we're going to do it, and, um, we're just working with what we've got right now. All right, so the next, uh, order of business, the next agenda item is local law partially suspending the provisions of the Utica City Charter, section seven dot zero zero three subdivision A by reducing the amount of required budgetary appropriation for construction, et cetera, streets. This will require a Thursday rule waiver and will need to be introduced and then laid on the, um, and, and then dealt with. So, um, would someone like to waive the Thursday rule if we are going to take this up?
Motion to waive the Thursday rule.
Okay, we have a motion from Miola.
Second, Mc, McNeil.
Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? We may introduce this local law. Okay, uh, the Thursday rule has been waived. Would I, can we have a motion to introduce, and then I'll read, uh, before the second, please?
I move to introduce, McNeil.
Okay, so McNeil has introduced, okay, McNeil has introduced a local law partially suspending provision, made a motion to introduce, uh, suspending the provisions of Utica City Charter, section seven dot zero zero three subdivision A by reducing the amount of required budgetary appropriations for the construction, et cetera, of streets. This was sponsored by councilmembers McNeil and Williamson, the minority and majority leader. Introductory local law number two of twenty twenty, local law number two of twenty twenty, presented and read April first, twenty twenty. I'm reading the actual Bill Jack and material here, adopted by the common council by a vote of eight yes and nays, et cetera, became local law with the approval of the mayor after public hearing on such and such date, being enacted by the common council of the city of Utica. Section one, the provisions of subdivision A of section seven dot zero zero three of Utica City Charter and hereby suspended for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to the extent that the required appropriation for construction of streets and other purposes stated therein shall be reduced from five million dollars to three million dollars. Section two, this local law shall become effective in accordance with municipal home rule law. There's also, uh, for the press and the members of the council, this was discussed earlier, memo, this is a certificate of necessity for the introductory local law number two of twenty twenty, attached to his introductory local law number two of twenty twenty, which if adopted would reduce the requirement to appropriate monies for the construction of streets from five million to three million for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Pursuant to municipal home rule law, section twenty subdivision four, this is the mayor, I hereby certify the necessity for immediate passage of this introductory local law. This means that instead of lying on the table, the council may adopt this local law at the same meeting is introduced, so long as it receives the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the body, six votes. Signed, Mayor Robert Paul Mary. We have a second. Is any, uh, let's take the votes on introducing this, McNeil?
Yes.
Burrmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice. Williamson. LaMedico.
Yay.
Brango.
Yes.
Okay, this has been introduced, and it is now on the floor ready for a, uh, is the council ready for a vote, or is there any discussion or debate? Anyone requesting?
Please bring it to the vote, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This has been brought to a vote. Your votes, Neil.
Yes.
Burrmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes, and I would like to qualify at the end, please.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yep.
LaMedico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, friend, you may qualify.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This was a really difficult choice for me. Um, I've really struggled. I'm really not comfortable with overriding the rule of the voters on a referendum, especially when in these circumstances, we don't have the capacity for them. That feels really bad. Um, I also know that the number one concern of my constituents, of all of our constituents, practically their number one concern of our roads. I really worry about this not going over well, uh, when we tell them that we're going to do fewer roads, um, this year, we're going to spend less money, and then in time, I, it's very clear to me that we are entering into a recession, perhaps a really huge recession. Uh, I think that, um, happened to this country in the next month is going to be just devastating. We've only begun to see what's going to happen. So I think we are about to enter the times, and I take the advice of the controller who says that this is not a good time for us to be taking on more debt. So I feel deeply conflicted that yet we reduce the, the amount that we're going to borrow, um, but I just want it on the record, um, that I do items like this, um, I, yeah, uh, and I guess, uh, that's as much as, as I'll say.
I, I have the floor there, Mr. President.
You may. Uh, that is, um, Mr. Brango, correct?
Oh, I'm deeper voice.
Oh, wait, it's, uh.
Gee.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. President. You know, we all feel the exact same way you are, Celeste. And, uh, you know, we have to go and do the right thing. So I think we all feel the same way. And I think we're all doing the exact same thing, conflicted about overriding a referendum, but, you know, we already know that, and, uh, we understand that. That's all I'm saying.
Great, okay.
Are you sure you're all set?
Mr. President, I'd like that floor, please. Debrango here.
All right, Debrango has the floor.
I just want to say, I, I, I think Celeste, uh, Councilman Friend said it best. Uh, so whatever, uh, he spoke about, I am full agreement with it. I wrestled with it. I wrestled with it all day yesterday, all day today. I contacted, uh, mine, talking back and forth, and I think, I think it's just the right thing to do right now. Uh, I don't like going against the voters, like, like you said, it was on referendum. And they voted for the five million, but at this time, and with the, with the fear of the unknown ahead, I, I, I just had to, uh, had to vote yes on this. That is all. Thank you. Mr. President, may, Mr. President, may I have the floor?
Uh, we have Beatrice.
Yes, uh, I, I, I agree totally with, uh, Councilman Debrango, uh, and Council, Councilperson Friend. But the thing that we need to stress also is this is not something that we voted to override permanently. We overrode it this one year. I think it was a very fiscal responsible decision. We have no way of knowing what is ahead of us in the next, in the next two months, six months, or what, you know. Um, I want to make it on the record that when we talked about this yesterday, I was the person to ask if we could delay this for a few months and, um, and revisit it when everything, when all the dust settles. And obviously, because of bids and every other, uh, purpose out there, we were told that we couldn't do that. So I think we made the, you know, the correct financial decision of borrowing five hundred thousand in this desperate times rather than borrowing two point five million dollars. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anyone else, uh, on to qualify?
Yes, Mr. President, if I can.
Alvin Moody has the floor.
Yeah, just briefly, I, 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 um, I want to say that I agree with it, with what everyone has said. I want to actually, um, say that this vote speaks to the greater issue of the paving plan that we have. And I'm, I'm looking forward to working with, uh, Councilman Friend. He has a fantastic idea about, um, quadrant paving. I think we need to seriously look at that. Um, and I think that the council we're making now gives us a pause to look at the paving plan moving forward. I don't like returning the votes, um, the, the voice of the voters. Um, but I think it is fiscally sound to do this, but it was a hard decision to do it. And, um, I am glad that the council is now looking at fiscal responsibility in light of the coronavirus. And, um, uh, we've been, uh, trying to do this for the past two or three weeks now. I'm in terms of being fiscally responsible in the light of the coronavirus, and I'm glad that the council is coming on board with that. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President, Frank and Miola, would I quickly disqualify?
Absolutely. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I echo all my colleagues', uh, uh, statements on this. Uh, we are working, uh, on a alternative revenue source. Um, we're working with our budget director and our controller and our to try to put a preliminary plan to my colleagues. Uh, we're going to need all the help we can to, uh, find another revenue source that we could, uh, on going into low loans every year for, uh, paving. So I like to thank, uh, all my council members for all their accolades towards it. Again, um, it was, uh, it was a referendum, and, uh, it hurts me to go against, it's not what they were going against it. What we're doing was fiscally responsible, and, uh, again.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Miola, you still are there, correct? Want to make sure?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure. It got like perfectly quiet, so I was, I was concerned you dropped off. Um, all right, is anyone else, um, would anyone else like to qualify? Or are we all set with this?
We're all set. Let's move.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Moving on to the legislation that sits in committee of the whole, if any of this would like to be dealt with, it will need a motion to be pulled for committee.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I, uh, move to pull resolution seven, three, one, eight point dash one dash five two dot dash one White Rose Street, LaFer Nexus Center.
All right, we have a motion to pull the aforementioned, no, the previously mentioned resolution. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was Beatrice with the second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee before I read? Okay, thank you very much. Find it in the packet here. We're not going in order. Okay, this is the call for public hearing. Uh, it's a resolution. Uh, calling for a public hearing for a lease of the property that sits at three eighteen dot eight dash one dash five two slash one White Rose Street. This is a lease from the Urban Renewal Authority to the Upper Mohawk Valley Memorial Auditorium Authority. The term is thirty years. The annual rent is one dollar per year. The public hearing will be called Wednesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P M. Your votes to pass the public hearing. Neil?
Yes.
Burrmaster.
Yay.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yep.
LaMedico.
I'd like to qualify my vote before I vote.
Okay, this is the public hearing, as you know.
And then, and, and I understand that. Uh, just quickly, uh, in, in our finance meeting yesterday, one of the things that I did ask for was a, a private appraisal of the land. I just want to make sure, you know, uh, we're doing the right thing for the public, uh, and, uh, for the citizens of Utica, as well as the audit authority to make sure that, uh, you know, we just want to keep it up and up to see exactly what the land is really worth before we decide to, uh, give it up for a dollar a year. And, uh, and I will be asking, uh, follow-up questions, uh, when the time comes to vote on, on this particular thing. I think, I think the, the, the project is a great project. I just think that, uh, there's some questions that have to be answered. And one of them, again, would be, uh, an appraisal of the land that we're actually going to be giving. So my vote on this to bring it to, to the public is, uh, is yay at this time.
Okay, for the qualification and the vote, Debrango? Debrango?
Yes, I had unmute. I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go. Nice, nice. Sounded like a mute one. Yeah, all right, thank you. A public hearing is now passed. Uh, is there a motion to pull the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Well, no, well, or we could leave it in committee, considering it's in committee.
It's in committee, so.
Then we'll, so we'll move on. I'm going to go back up to our list. Uh, is there a motion to pull anything else from committee?
Yes, I like to make a motion to start with the Board of Estimate Compensation Change.
Hey, Miola, is a motion to pull Board of Estimates Compensation Change from committee. Um, is there a second from the council? McNeil?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, any opposed to pulling this from committee?
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to read into the record.
If you would like to read it, go right ahead, yes.
Give a little break. Give you a little break, cuz I know you're doing some things at once. Resolution. Resolution number one, Resolution to change rate of compensation of members. Sign assessment review. Be it resolved, section three dash nineteen dash seven, the code of Resolution of the City of Utica is hereby. Read as follows. Section three dash nineteen dash seven, compensation for members of the Board of Assessment Review. The members of the Board of Assessment Review shall each compensations receive compensation for their respective services, the sum of five hundred dollars per year. In lieu of all other compensation, including reimbursements for expenses, further be it resolved, this resolution shall become effective today, twenty twenty.
Votes?
McNeil, yes.
All right, Fur Master?
Yes.
Yes.
Miola? Booty?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
All right. I heard Miola. Uh, did everyone else? I just, we are recording.
I did not hear. I'm the clerk, do not hear.
Okay, so, uh, Frank Miola, your vote was. Thank you very much. This is now passed. All right, moving up to the list. Do we have any other motions to pull from committee?
Yes, we have, uh, Resolution number three.
Okay, Resolution number three. Motion to pull, um, Resolution number three from committee. This is a resolution determining that proposed action is a type-two action for the purposes of New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Is there a second to pull this before we read the whole thing?
I get DeBranco.
Okay, we have DeBranco with a second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Okay. As the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, the city is considering undertaking the resurfacing of various city streets, roads, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, and grading or improving the rights of way with flexible pavement of a type described in Local Finance Law, section two A, twenty C, and incidental improvements and expenses in connection therewith the project, and whereas pursuant, Article eight of the Environmental Conserv- Conservation Law as amended in the Seeker Act, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York being number six, N Y C R R, part six seventeen, as amended the regulation, regulation, the city desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulations with respect to the project, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the common council of the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, as follows. Project constitutes a type-two action under six, N Y C R R, six seventeen, five, C one, and no further action under the Seeker Act and regulations as required. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Your votes. Resolution number three.
Yes.
McNeil? Fur Master?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Booty?
Yep.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
All right. This is passed. Thank you very much. Back up to the list. Are there any other motions to pull from committee?
Pose ordinance number four, our requ- request for bonding ordinance for five hundred thousand dollars. It requires an amendment also, Mr. President.
All right, so let the floor recognize that Councilman Miola stated it requires an amendment. Uh, we have a motion to pull from committee bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of two point five million dollars of serial bonds of the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, to finance the cost of street paving projects. Is there a second to pull this from committee?
McNeil?
Okay, there's a second from McNeil. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Thank you. This has been pulled from committee. Um, I will summarize this prior to someone making an amendment to it. Uh, whereas all conditions precedent to the financing of capital projects described below, including compliance with the provision of the state environmental quality re- um, I should say, Review Act have been performed, and whereas it is now desired to authorize the financing of such capital projects, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York as follows. Section one, the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, the city is hereby authorized, et cetera. We're gonna summarize down to section six. Bonds and any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bonds shall contain the recital of the validity prescribed by section fifty-two of local finance law. The faith and credit of the city are hereby irrevocably pledged. The punct- uh, let's say their punctual payment of the principal of an interest on the bonds, and any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bonds and provisions shall be made annually in the budget of the city by appropriation for A, the amortization and redemption of the bonds and bond anticipation notes to mature in such year, and B, the payment of interest to be due and payable in such year. Um, this again is positions of two point five million in serial bonds right now. I believe there is an amendment on the floor that would like to be made.
Miola, I like to make an amendment where we see two point five million. We need to. Five hundred thousand, and where we see five, we have to amend that to three million.
So I've circled the three pieces that will be changed. Okay, we have a second from McNeil.
There's another.
All right, I'm gonna take votes on this amendment. It's pretty substantial. Uh, McNeil?
Yes.
Fur Master?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola? Booty?
Yep.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
All right, and DeBranco?
Before I vote, could I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
All right, um, does it say in there just temporary? Does it say for just the fiscal?
This is only for one.
This is only for, yes. Yeah.
It's only for one bonding year, Frank, yes.
One year. It does say it in there? Does it say the year, the actual year? Twenty twenty-one? Just asking.
Legislation only for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And then before, um, before we vote on the actual amended legislation, I would just like everyone to acknowledge they've read this legislation that is on the screen in full and, uh, are voting on it as hereby amended. So your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Fur Master?
Yes.
Friend? Councilperson Friend, are you, uh?
Yes.
Ah, thank you. Miola?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
DeBranco?
Yes.
Very much. It's now been passed. Back up to the committee list. Is there any, uh, is there a motion to pull anything else from, uh, committee?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to, we need to pull a proposal, Resolution number five, from pertaining to the other, uh, items to be bonded for the, the fire and the D P W.
Okay, so we have Resolution number five. Is there a second to pulling Resolution determining that action to undertake certain projects will not have a significant effect on the environment?
McNeil?
Neil is the second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Okay. Been pulled from, oh, this is the, um, this is very similar to the other, uh, Seeker Act waiver.
Yes.
Yeah, whereas the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, the city is considering undertaking certain projects described in Exhibit A in this resolution, the projects, and whereas pursuant to Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law as amended the Seeker Act and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being six, N Y C R R, part six seventeen, as amended regulations, common council desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulations with respect to each of the projects. Exhibit A includes Department of Public Works, one truck with plow salter, our department, Ford Explorer SUV, or, and a re-chassis of an ambulance, police department, five police utility explorers, and one crime scene unit van. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Utica Common Councils follows, each of these projects constitutes a type-two action as defined in the regulations, and no further action under Seeker, and the regulations is required. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Your votes, McNeil? Fur Master?
Yes.
Friend?
Yeah.
Miola?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This has been passed. Is there a motion to pull anything else from committee?
Pull ordinance number six pertaining to the actual bond ordinance of the items that we just, uh, passed through Seeker.
All right, thank you very much. Scroll down. Motion to pull on ordinance authorizing the issuance of seven hundred eighty-five thousands dollars of serial bonds of the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, to finance the cost of various capital projects. Is there a second?
McNeil?
McNeil's the second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Okay, no one's opposed to pulling it on the floor. Whereas all conditions precedent precedent to the financing of the various capital projects described below, including compliance with the provision of the state environmental quality review act, we definitely have to fix that in our templates, have been performed, and whereas it is now desired authorize the financing of such various capital projects, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, as follows. Section one, the City of Utica, Oneonta County, New York, the city hereby authorized to undertake the various capital projects described below as an aggregate estimated maximum cost of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. The estimated maximum cost in period of probable usefulness of each specific object or purpose is as follows. Just gonna go through the list. One truck with plow salter, useful, probable usefulness fifteen years, two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Our department, one Ford Explorer SUV, maximum estimated cost forty thousand dollars, probable usefulness five years. Re-chassis ambulance, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, probable usefulness five years. Police department, five police utility explorers, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, probable usefulness five years, one crime scene unit van, one hundred thousand dollars. Probably usefulness of five years, total of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. President, you don't have to read the whole thing. If you wanna jump to just section eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and fourteen, it'd be.
Thank you very much. Is, is there an acknowledgement that the legislation that is on the screen right now, in between where I left off, and section eleven, has been read and acknowledged by the common council of the City of Utica? Yes, all right, thank you very much. Section eleven, City Controller, as Chief Fiscal Officer of the city, is hereby authorized to enter into an undertaking for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time, and any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the sale of the bonds, requiring the city to provide secondary market disclosure as required by the Securities and Exchange Commission Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. Section twelve, the ordinance, this ordinance is not, this ordinance is not a permissive referendum. Section thirteen, the common council hereby determines that each of the objects or purposes authorized by this ordinance constitutes a type-two action with the meaning of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act to Seeker Act. And the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the regulations, and no further environmental review is required under the Seeker Act and regulations. Section fourteen, this ordinance, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in full or sort in a form. Observer Dispatch, the official newspaper, together with a notice of the city clerk, and substantially the form provided in section eighty-one dot zero zero of the local finance law. Your votes. Thank you. Fur Master?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yep.
Lomaco?
Yay.
DeBranco?
Yes, but I'd like to qualify my vote.
Qualify the vote? You will.
Okay, I just want, uh, for the record and the media that's out there, this original ordinance, uh, ordinance was two point seven million. Uh, two point seven million, eight thousand dollars. Uh, we met as a finance committee, uh, as a whole, yesterday, and, uh, we reduced many of the items that were on the list, and I just wanna go through them quickly. We reduced the ten-wheel dump truck with a flatbed for two hundred six thousand for Department of Public Works. We took that off. Uh, we removed the reconstruction of dorms, bathroom station number two, replace air conditioning station number two, refer department for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We reduced the information, information technology department for a server at fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we reduced the police department, uh, utility vehicles, seven to five vehicles. Uh, we eliminated, uh, from the parks department, infield groomer, twenty-two thousand. Uh, playground equipment, a hundred and fifty thousand. Facilities department, we reduced, or we eliminated three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for a city all air handler, and we eliminated four hundred and fifty thousand uh, for a city roof replacement exterior seal. Uh, so we reduced it from two point seven million to seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, we're trying to be responsible. We don't know what lies ahead with this virus, so I just wanted to make, uh, a point. Thank you.
Thanks for, uh, reiterating all that. That's, uh, that was really helpful for the record.
Thank you.
All right, and the vote was yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any other legislation this evening, so someone would like to, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Before I ask for a second, I would like to thank everybody for your patience. Um, we did have to do an anticipated executive session, which took a little time to deal with tonight, but thank you for, uh, making these meetings go smoothly over with, Max. Second?
I second it.
Second.
All right. All right, thank you. No one's opposed. Stop the recording and have a good evening.